I really want to talk about three things tonight and I have the presentation kind of broken up into three categories. The first is, what exactly is the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery and the system that supports that? Second is, some of the history of that system and recent events that have culminated in the completion of some monitoring data which will then be used by ecology to render an opinion about operating the gallery. And lastly, I want to share the monitoring results from that effort with you and describe the next steps. So, the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery, we refer to that by the acronym LREG. LREG just stands for Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery. There's some logic behind the name. It's actually situated on a piece of property that was owned by the Reed Sand and Gravel Company. It's the lower part of their property and there is a stormwater infiltration gallery on that piece. So, the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery, AKA LREG. This is a map of the Greater Isaguá area. You can see I-90 kind of snaking through the bottom of the map. And the white boundary is generally the outline of Isaguá Highlands. Isaguá Highlands was permitted in 19 -- or was enabled in 1996 under Development Agreement. That Development Agreement had a chapter detailing and governing the construction and implementation of stormwater systems within Isaguá Highlands. That effort was the result of a multi-year assemblage of experts and community stakeholders known as the Water Task Force. It included representatives from the city, from the district, from King County, from the public. That Water Task Force provided input into the Development Agreement and they basically defined the policies for and the standards for implementing stormwater treatment and disposal in Isaguá Highlands. As part of that and embedded within the Development Agreement is an obligation for the city to do a variety of things. Two of them germane to this discussion. One is to maintain base flows in the north fork of Isaguá Creek. The other is to maintain recharge to the lower Isaguá Valley aquifer, which is the source of drinking water for plateau residents and city residents. So, the city of Isaguá and the Semamish Plateau Water and Sewer District both have water production wells within the Lower Isaguá Valley that's recharged by stormwater in part from Isaguá Highlands. So, through a SEPA process and EIS and the Development Agreement, there were specific standards that the city bound themselves to contractually in recharging the aquifer and maintaining the supply to those wells. Within Isaguá -- within the Greater Isaguá Highlands area, only part of that flows into the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery and in this graphic it's the part represented in the two white shaded areas. So, these two areas, the southern one is the area generally around Swedish Hospital, the northern one is the area generally around the YWCA and the new Regency Theaters. Approximately 81 acres, that's about the size of Bellevue Square. Stormwater from rooftops, streets, landscape areas collects in a conventional system into pipes. Those pipes flow downhill, which in this case is generally to the west, and they converge at that blue dot that you see on the map and that's the Upper Reed Stormwater Pond. Within this basin and within this area, treatment is provided by three separate facilities. So, there's source treatment within the basins, there's treatment within the Upper Reed Pond, which is the blue dot. By the way, that pond is a certified dam and it's designed to contain the 100,000-year storm. So, as far as ponds go, that is a very large pond even in comparison with other facilities in Isaguá Highlands. After water's collected in that pond where it's detained, it's split into two streams. One stream goes to the north fork of Isaguá Creek to meet our obligation, the SEPA and Development Agreement obligation for maintaining base flows in North Fork Isaguá Creek. And part of the water discharges to the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery. It's metered out by an orifice and the maximum rate is controlled by that. Now, originally, the discharge to the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery was at a rate much higher than it is today, but through events which I'll describe in a minute, that rate was reduced. And in combination with that reduction in rate was a redesign and a rebuilding of the entire Isaguá Highlands stormwater system so that that lower rate would be compatible with the rest of the facilities. So, the Wash Dot Detention Pond and the First Avenue Pond were all added to Isaguá Highlands to compensate for the fact that we knew we were going to reduce the average discharge rate at the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery. So, coming out of the pond, which is the blue dot, the water goes downhill to the green dot and that is the location of the infiltration gallery. And my next slide is going to be a blow-up of this, so you'll get a little more detail here in a minute. The red dot, to the west of that are the city's production wells and the yellow dots are the district's production wells, the closest one being well nine, the two further away being wells seven and eight. So, now I'm going to zoom in on the drainage basins and those well facilities. So, here you can see a little more detail of those drainage basins. The pond, the irregular shaped object. The infiltration gallery, which is a buried perforated pipe that is several hundred feet long and it's part of a more complex facility. The pipe itself is not all that's there. There's a bioswale there, there's metering controls, there's water quality monitoring equipment. It's a fairly complicated and fairly extensive set of facilities. It's a long linear pipe so that it distributes the water evenly across a broad area. And it infiltrates just to the west there is district well nine and then you can see further north and west wells seven and eight also owned by the district. I'm going to zoom in again to the area outlined in the yellow dash. So, here's a blow-up. You can see the linear shape of the infiltration gallery. MW3 stands for Monitoring Well 3, which is a monitoring well that was installed to assist ecology in collecting water quality data. It is underground, so it goes down through the gravel where the water infiltrates. And it's approximately 30 feet away from the center of the infiltration gallery. Then further to the west of that, about 600 feet away is well nine, that's the district's production well. I'm not -- Paul?
I'm sorry, real quick. A couple -- Dan, you've said ecology a couple times, could you just clarify that? You just said ecology.
Department of Ecology.
State Department?
State Department of Ecology.
Thank you.
The next slide will be a cross-section. So, if you were to slice this and look north, so from the bottom up, this is a cross-section of what that would generally look like. So, the valley floor, which is represented there where well nine is located, it's relatively flat. We move up, a bench that's about 50 feet tall, to an area where the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery was constructed. That's actually a man-made bench that was carved into the hill. And that consists of the pipe there that you see in the blue with Monitoring Well 3 just to the west of that. Under all of that, in the blue, that represents -- this is schematic only at this point, so, you know, don't read too much into the graphic. The blue is a depiction of the Lower Isaguá Valley Aquifer and that's the underground lake that sits under all of the Semamish Valley floor. It's saturated sands and gravels and the level of that varies seasonally and with how much we're pumping from the aquifer for potable water purposes and by how much is infiltrated. So, it's shown here as a straight line. It actually moves up and down a little bit and changes shape a little bit depending upon other activities in the area. Above that is the Vados Zone. The Vados Zone is unsaturated sand and gravel. So, that's -- water is free to move through the Vados Zone because it's porous, but it is not surcharged. It's not covered in water and generally has water in it and also air in it. The Vados Zone is very important to this discussion because the Vados Zone is generally in most stormwater systems, the feature below a bioswale or a rain garden or an infiltration system that provides treatment to the water. It is also the area above which ecology regulates the quality of stormwater and groundwater. So, ecology regulates what's in the blue area and we're responsible by the time we -- the water gets to the blue area to meet certain water quality standards. Now, I've also shown in there a sloping line that's an aquitard. An aquitard is a barrier to water moving freely through the sands and gravels. And aquitards, this is again schematic only in this picture, aquitards exist in this geological feature as layers of compressed silt and other fine material that doesn't pass water very well. There's multiples of those, they're stacked one on top of the other, and they're discontinuous east to west, north to south. So, there's holes in these aquitards and there's various aquitards. The aquitards impede the vertical flow of water through the Lower Isaguá Valley Aquifer, so through the LIVA. Water is relatively freely -- free to travel laterally, but is relatively confined in a vertical direction. The next slide now, I'm going to zoom in on the infiltration pipe itself. So, starting at the top of that slide is a bioswale and the bioswale sits at the ground surface. It's several hundred feet long and about 50 feet wide. It has six -- or 12 separate bioswale cells in it. It takes the water that comes out of the Upper Reed Pond, which has now been treated twice, once by source controls and once by a settling and residence process in the Upper Reed Pond, and treats it yet a third time by distributing the water through saturated soil and vegetation mix. And that soil and the vegetation remove -- removes any residual pollutants that happen to be in that stormwater. The stormwater moves through the bioswale and there is some piping that is not shown for clarity here. It's collected in pipes at the ends of the bioswale, taken underground and discharged into the infiltration pipe. And the infiltration pipe is just a 12-inch diameter plastic pipe, several hundred feet long, laid level, that has perforations in it. So, it fills with water, stormwater runs out of those perforations into the ground, then moves vertically and to some extent laterally through the gravel in the ground, through the Vados Zone until it reaches the LIVA, the Lower Isaguá Valley Aquifer. So, if we unwind in time now, I want to go back and describe some of this area operationally and what has happened with the LREG so you can understand the context of tonight's discussion. I don't know how long ago, but at least in 1964, we have an aerial photo that shows this area being used for infiltration. And the Reed Sand and Gravel Company, which operated on this site for many, many years, used this area to discharge their rainwater and their processed water when it was too turbid to discharge to Lake Semamish. So, they had a permit to discharge stormwater to Lake Semamish unless it was turbid. When it was turbid, they pumped it to this area at at least 12 CFS and they infiltrated water here for more than 40 years. In 1991, the district drilled well number nine just to the west of this area. And in 2006, Port Blakely bought this piece of property for the express purpose to use it for infiltration. And the reason they did that is because they had seen that the Reed Sand and Gravel operation had discharged their stormwater there at a very high rate, 12 CFS, for years and years and years. This is very turbid stormwater. And there was no evidence that there were any adverse environmental or aquifer impacts as a result of that. There was not contaminated water coming out of the city's wells, there was not contaminated water coming out of well nine, there was not breakout on the hills, there was no evidence in the creeks. So, there was every reason to believe that this was an area, a geologic area, that had the ability to assimilate lots of dirty stormwater. And Port Blakely used that for a three or four-year period to discharge construction stormwater from their construction operations in Isaguá Highlands. Now, they dialed the rate back a little bit and they discharged at a peak rate of about eight CFS and that happened for a couple of years until 2008. In 2008, the Department of -- the Washington State Department of Ecology became concerned that this practice was safe. And they were concerned about two things. The quality of the raw stormwater, were there contaminants in it and was the level of contaminant predictable or not? So, that was concern number one. The second concern was the ability of the Vados Zone to remove those contaminants. So, they issued an action order to the city and asked them to stop infiltrating, which the city did, and to begin a period of, as it turns out, a three-year period of very extensive and intensive monitoring. And in this case, the monitoring is water withdrawn from Monitoring Well 3, so that monitoring well that sits just to the west of the infiltration gallery, to monitor both the groundwater and the stormwater to determine what the contaminants were in that stormwater, if anything, and how variable they were. That occurred then until today. And the reason we're here today is ecology has finished the analysis of that monitoring data and they're ready to take action on that. And I'm going to show you next the results of that monitoring data. What's going to happen next though, and I think this has -- there's been some confusion about this course of action, but what's not on the table next is that we begin to operate the infiltration gallery. What's next is that we enter the second phase of monitoring for the infiltration gallery where we begin to infiltrate water and we monitor the capability of the Vados Zone to remain -- to remove residual contaminants. We'll be, if assuming that we accept those conditions and ecology offers those, and that's in a permit that is pending, that's likely to be issued within the next two months. Assuming we're agreeable to those terms, this will simply be another monitoring phase where we check to see if our assumptions about the Vados Zone are accurate. If they are, and the Vados Zone is effective at protecting public health and safety as far as aquifer contaminations occur, then we'll move on to the next phase of permitting, which may be that we're allowed to operate the infiltration gallery for some extended period of time. If the monitoring results though show that we cannot control the quality of the water, then we'll either be asked to reevaluate the system and provide additional treatment so that we change the raw water quality, or we'll be asked to stop infiltrating altogether. So, we are not on the precipice of an operating program for the LREG. We're on the precipice of the second phase of monitoring. The city has been a close partner with the Department of Ecology and with the Semamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. And we've developed a monitoring program, we share the data from that, and we all discuss and react to the implications of that. And so, now I want to describe what we've discovered. So, of the couple of hundred possible contaminants in stormwater, we through a preliminary sampling program in collaboration with ecology and with the district, narrowed down our contaminants of concern to just eight items. So, most of the contaminants were deemed to be so unlikely to occur in water or so unlikely to cause a health risk that we simply didn't look for those. And these are exotic compounds that would come from chemical processes that are not happening in the Highlands, so it's very unlikely they would occur. But we settled on eight constituents that we were going to monitor and watch. Six of them are listed on this slide. And they include dissolved solids, manganese, total organic carbon, arsenic chloride, and zinc. Now, I've built each one of these graphs so that the drinking water standard is at the same point on each graph. Now, you notice there isn't one for total organic carbon. That's because there is no drinking standard for total organic carbon. It's not a contaminant in groundwater. It's not a contaminant in drinking water. The blue bars are the actual water quality data from the monitoring wells, from the stormwater. And you can see that some of those are missing. Those are either samples that there was no detection of that element in the sample or they were otherwise deemed to be unsuitable. But generally speaking, this is the data for two winters of stormwater runoff. And you can see in all cases here that this is below the drinking water standard. I'm just going to pause. Below the drinking water standard for our runoff. There were however, two constituents where we did have detects above the drinking water standards. The first of those was iron. So, in two of our samples over that two-winter period, we had two samples where the drinking water standard of .3 milligrams per liter was exceeded. Significantly though, in this aquifer, this aquifer has pockets of natural iron that occur in it. What I mean by that is you can drill a monitoring well at one location in the valley floor and we've measured iron greater than 1 milligram per liter, three times the drinking water standard. You can move 100 feet away from that location and drill another well and there won't be any iron. In other words, this aquifer is very variable in its ability to capture and assimilate iron. There's iron periodically in the -- in the potable water wells and periodically they aren't. The point here is that even though our stormwater exceeds the drinking water standard, we don't exceed the background levels that are in the aquifer. Ecology is not very worried about iron, especially since iron is not a public health risk in drinking water. It's an aesthetic risk. So, it'll stain your clothes, it'll stain your plumbing fixtures, it's not a health risk. The last item is the one that is getting scrutiny and that's total coliform. So, of all the samples we collected over that two-year period, we had one sample where the total coliform exceeded the water -- the drinking water standard and the drinking water standard is zero. So, there's no coliform allowed in drinking water. Now, this is not unusual. All stormwater has coliform in it. It's present in the lake, every wetland, every roadside ditch, every stormwater system, every bioswale, every rain garden. The normal process for removing coliform from stormwater is to pass it through soil. It's to pass it through the Vados Zone that lies underneath the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery. So, the next phase of our testing, the one that ecology is likely to enable within the next couple of months, is for us to reintroduce infiltration. So, take our stormwater, which has been bypassed for the last three years, begin to infiltrate it again and to monitor intensively at Monitoring Well 3 to see if all -- if we have any coliform hits. Now, that could be a result of one of two things. Either our inlet water quality has too much coliform in it or the Vados Zone doesn't have enough treatment capability to remove that residual coliform or a combination of those two. But if we get coliform hits out of Monitoring Well 3, then we'll have to go back to the drawing board and either do something else with the stormwater so that it has less coliform in it, or we'll have to decide to do something else with the stormwater other than infiltrate. We will not be allowed to discharge coliform-laden stormwater into the aquifer. So, this is where we are today. The next steps are, we're waiting for ecology to issue a state waste discharge permit. It will be the first time the state of Washington has regulated stormwater with a waste discharge permit. Normally, the process for this are based upon BMPs. BMPs are an acronym for Best Management Practices. The theory is that if you carry out certain items, and in this particular case, we would have met that criteria for BMPs in that we have three treatment trains on our stormwater. In a BMP-based system, all other stormwater systems in the state, if you successfully implement the BMPs, you're assumed to have clean stormwater and the stormwater is then legal to discharge. This will be the first stormwater system where the actual water quality is going to be monitored and regulated and it not assumed to be clean, but we have to prove that it's clean. I'm assuming that we'll accept the terms of that permit and we're negotiating with ecology for the final configuration of that and we expect that very shortly. And I think that concludes my formal presentation and would love to take questions.
Questions from the City Council. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that presentation. Your last comment was about the water discharge permit versus the other method.
The waste discharge permit.
Sorry, waste discharge permit. And that it would be the first time for ecology. Is this a stricter type of standard?
Well, I think stricter in this case is an opinion. In my opinion, it's stricter in that we're required to meet, to prove that we meet a specific standard rather than an assumption that we're meeting a specific standard. So, I think the logical conclusion is that it's stricter. Now, the standard is the same. We can't -- we have to meet the drinking water standards and we cannot pollute the aquifer, but the compliance with it is stricter criteria.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barber?
Can I follow up on that? So, is this going to be the new standard that all wells in the state are going to have to adhere to?
I'm not sure I can answer that. I'm sure as you're aware, ecology is changing the rules for stormwater treatment and discharge across the state. They -- we have for now, a couple of years been under the Phase 2 discharge requirements and are currently writing the Phase 3 discharge requirements. All of those iterations are stricter than the standards that came before them. To what extent this now becomes normal practice or not is going to be up to ecology and I really can't say.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. Dan, there was a slide where you had the cross-section showing the pipe in the ground? Yeah, that one right there. So, the water is spilled out onto the surface. I'm trying to get a picture of where the water enters into this. It's out, I think it says bioswale.
Yes, the -- I'm assuming you can see the cursor there?
Yeah.
The water enters on the surface of the bioswale. So, it comes down the hill in an enclosed pipe that's buried, comes out of the hill just before it gets to the bioswale and water just runs into the bioswale. The bioswale is a series of concrete curbs that are all laid flat and there's landscaping in between. And the curbs are there to distribute this surface flow of water evenly across the various cells in the bioswale with then the hydraulic mechanism that water flows through the vegetation to the other end. So, it's surface flow across what looks like a garden.
Okay, and so, and then the rest of it, I see underground there, there's this infiltration pipe. Now, do these exist elsewhere? I mean, was this designed and invented and implemented here for us or where does this come from?
This is a very common stormwater treatment device. So, bioswales are very commonly employed. There's probably a bioswale in every municipality in Washington State. This is not new technology and it's not innovative technology. It's a very common treatment device.
In combination with the infiltration pipe, I guess, the whole thing?
In combination with the infiltration pipe. And you're probably familiar with the infiltration pipe on a smaller scale, a rooftop infiltrator, a French drain on your property. You know, this is -- this happens to be a little bit longer than a lot of those, but there are dozens of these elsewhere in Isaguá Highlands on a smaller scale.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Butler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very enlightening presentation. We've had a lot of folks come here and say that we're on the verge of putting polluted water into the same water that we serve to our citizens by way of the local Isaguá Valley Aquifer. We -- we're working closely with the Department of Ecology and they are the ones really that are driving the train, if you will, on this. And that everything they're doing is, and we're doing, is based on best available science. And it's not just based on best available science, but it looks like it's based on rigid monitoring requirements and actual data that demonstrates that either works or it doesn't work. Are those statements, you know, correct? Or if not, what should I have said, Dan?
Those statements are correct.
Okay.
And let me add to that something that I just mentioned to the Semamish City Council. It's unfortunate that a council is presented with conflicting data from different professional sources. And what I wanted to leave with them was the concept that we're not asking them to believe the district's consultants or the city's consultants. What's important to recognize is that ecology, the organization that's charged by the state with ensuring public safety in this regard, is a partner in this process and has been for many years. They are legally obligated to perform the watchdog role and they're doing that. They've been very strict with us. We have had to comply with standards that are higher than any other municipality has had to encounter so far. And there isn't any reason to believe that they won't be successful in their due diligence.
Thank you, Dan.
Comment?
Yes, Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah, and I think you have another slide that shows the time history. So, this -- this seems important to me. This says 15 cubic feet per second for decades and during that time, a well was drilled. So, I mean, do we -- do we have -- we must have learned something during this time about the quality of water that was being served to customers? Are you saying -- are we saying that the quality of water served to customers was satisfactory during this time? When the Reed people were dumping it up to 15 cubic feet per second?
I'm not aware of any instances during that period when either the city's wells nor the district's wells had contamination problems or did not meet drinking water standards.
And so, and that's, to me, that's pretty dramatic. And then the next phase of 8 cubic feet per second from Port Blakely, I mean, that seems pretty dramatic to me too. That's -- were they -- were they using something just like, were they -- they were using this LREG, Port Blakely was?
They were using this facility for discharge of stormwater. They were not using the same treatment facilities that are being used now. And the raw water quality from that operation was worse than the stormwater quality is now.
So, you showed us a map earlier with a pond. Was, was it that pond wasn't there, or what was not there, the bioswale?
That pond was there, but they were not using that pond to discharge. They were, that pond was not inserted in the middle of the treatment plane. They were, they were bypassing that pond with turbid construction runoff.
Okay, so, all right. So this, this information seems pretty, this is very important information, it seems to me. This is, that there's history here, and, you know, thanks for bringing that out. I didn't, I wasn't aware of any of this before.
Councilmember Butler.
Looking at, at well nine, what, what, what treatment does the Sumamish Plateau Water and Sewer District provide for water that goes through that, goes into their system from well nine?
I can't speak authoritatively on that, Councilman Butler. I do know what I read in their comprehensive plan, though, and they disinfect at that well, and they introduce a pH modifier for corrosion control at least. Now, what else they might do there, I'm not sure, but their comprehensive plan lists those two treatment processes at that site.
Thank you.
Other questions? Any other questions from the council? Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.